Well, he's not an acrobat, so he's kidding.
We have done it since.
You have to switch it.
A sick horse.
You have to use your little style. Time, 5:29.
Yeah.
I couldn't hear Jeb.
He needs to be over there by him.
Okay. You give me a thing?
Yeah.
Geez, I wonder where that's sticking this is. Oh. Oh.
I'd like to call the Ufala City Council meeting in order, April the 4th, 2022, it's 5:30. Mr. Davis, would you give us the invocation following we pledge allegiance?
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for starting out on the path of righteousness, and guiding us and leading us in the direction that you would have us to go, dear heavenly Father. Dear heavenly Father, let us do business in the business sense and do things pleading for the city. Please bless me, and ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Cox.
Here.
Yes.
Here.
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 Kind of changed our seating around, so we're a little little new at getting used to this. Before we get to the consent agenda, I would like Ms. Rossi to come forward, please. Ladies and gentlemen, y'all, please stand and join me to recognize City of Ufala citizens' excellence of award. Mayor. Jeb, I'm gonna ask you to come over here too, sir. Ms. Rossi, it is my distinct honor as mayor on behalf of the council and the city of Ufala to award you with the City of Ufala Citizen Excellent Award. This award recognizes the tremendous amount of effort and sacrifices you have made to make our community one of the best in the nation. You have served Ufala and its people in a variety of ways, ranging from volunteering for community events, leading the Chamber of Commerce as executive director, to now finding good paying jobs for our city through the Work Ready Program. These are all phenomenal achievements and worthy of this award and their own merits. In addition, however, many people in Ufala have known you as the person who everyone can speak to and have a compassionate ear to hear. That in itself is something to admire and celebrate. We would be here all night trying to list everything Pam Rossi has done for the city of Ufala to make it a better place. Would you like? You have anything?
Oh, just thank you so much. This means a lot to me, you know, um. I've loved Ufala from the moment I rode over the water and all the different spots that you ride over on 69 Highway. And the moment I, I saw the city, I said, that's where I need to be. And even my brother and my sister-in-law said, that's where you need to be, Pam. So, I'm not through yet. I'm still working and I love you all and I appreciate this so very much.
We appreciate everything. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of minutes, regular council meeting, March 7th, 2022. Item six, approval of the treasurer's report. Item seven, approval of the March 2022 payroll figures for the general fund in the amount of $60,621.75. Receipt claims, the city of Ufala. Consideration of acceptance, approval, adoption, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement to approve a resolution for the purchase of City Hall. Counsel?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Councilor Efton?
Yes.
Councilor Kirby?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
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 All right. Oh, yes, that carries. Move on to item 10. Consideration of acceptance, approval, adoption, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of to approve the mayor's signature on a memorandum of understanding between Bird Rides Incorporated and the city of Ufala to allow Bird Rides Incorporated to provide stand-up electric scooter service in Ufala. Mr. Jones, would you catch us up to speed on that, please?
Well, we've been approached by the Community Culture Church that they are wanting to try to provide a scooter service here in town. And they, this is the agreement that they bring to us to let us make that approval and make those scooters available to our visitors, to, you know, for tourism, recreation. And I think it would probably be a good benefit to our town.
Okay. Counsel?
I wonder if there's anybody here to talk about it. I, I think it's, um. I, I really like it. I was discussing with my 17-year-old granddaughter. She was kind of excited about it and I said, oh, you can't ride. You have to be 18. So, I, I'm not sure how many people will use this, but I guess we'll see in the future. I mean, I kind of wish, I don't know how that's gonna work with just 18 and above be able to use it. The only other concern I have is it talks about that we have to maintain our streets, or if one gets messed up from that, which has me a little concerned because we all know how our streets are. So, I don't know. Somebody's, I don't know how fast these things go, but I, I was just at Thunder Game in Bricktown and those things skid along pretty fast. Plus, you have to ride them on the street, not the sidewalk, so I was wondering how you felt about that. That seems fine.
Mark.
I, I think it'd be great, you know?
Yeah.
We're gonna do silly things on them, but we'll do what has to come. I think it'd be great. I'd like to see it.
Yeah. The only other concern I had was it kind of said in here that they were supposed to like, kind of, um, instead of riding in the middle of the road, it's kind of like on the right side of the road. And, you know, on Main Street with the cars pulling out and stuff, you sure don't want to be, it's probably gonna be hard enough to see you on a scooter. You know, but I assume they can ride them on the highway, can they? On Main Street? I mean, if you can't drive a golf cart or anything on the highway, how can you drive a scooter? You can?
Can't drive it on Main Street.
Uh-uh. It's the highway.
It's the highway.
It's the highway.
You can't drive it, you can't. You can't cross it?
You can cross it.
Let's leave the question at the.
The, the latest thing is for cyber sites, you can tag those now.
Okay.
They have lights and you can buy light kits and things that they can put on them. And they are legal on the highway, which.
Really?
Does it, yes.
It's not a golf cart.
Not a golf cart. The minimum speed's 45. And they have to have turn signals and headlights and, you know, but you have to sign a half day with the tag office.
Is it, what is it?
And it's essentially a motorcycle tag, which you get. But the scooter would be different. And I, I don't know how you would legalize those.
On a highway?
On a highway, right. We'd prob, you know, we would just have to enforce the going across, runs it up and down.
I don't know if they're aware of that. I wish there was somebody here. I mean, I'm for it, you know, but I just kind of had concerns.
I'm, I'm with the Community Culture Church. I can speak to the scooters.
Okay, would you step forward for us with this, please? Yeah, that'd be fine.
I can address with the.
Yeah.
That's all right. You're all right.
So, we have been in talks. My name is Jeff Wright. I'm the head professor of the Community Culture Church. We've been in talks with Bird Incorporated for several months now, about bringing this to our community and spoke with Adam several times as well. And so, we wanted to see if we could get this going, get it moving. To the, the question with Main Street, I know working with Bird, if this is approved, they will work with the city and with us on how these will operate. They can set up safe riding zones to where we can, they can, however they do their technology, I'm not familiar with all of that, but they can set it up to where a scooter cannot go on or cross Main Street. If it's set up to be on this side of the, of Main Street, then it will only operate on this side of Main Street. If they tried to go across, it would completely cut it out. And then anything that's set up on the other side of Main Street would only operate on that side of Main Street as well. So, you can set up zones that they can do.
Well, I guess, I guess the question we had is, are, we say Main Street and we act like we have control of it, but we don't. Okay, so it's up to the state highway department as to whether these can drive down Main Street. That's what we're discussing, which I guess we'll leave y'all up to that, to find that out. I'm pretty sure it won't be legal, but.
I know they go up to 15 miles an hour.
Yeah.
It is 18 and older, they verify that, they can, there, there are communities that have it that kids younger than 18 have ridden them because most of the time it's just to verify that you were born on this date and they can get around that, but they do have an option that you can add into the software that when somebody signs up for it, they have to verify that they divert, they divert with a copy of their ID. And so, they have to scan and they can see that. So, it's a way that we can get around the young people that aren't supposed to be riding them. And from everything that we have seen and that we've talked to them with, they're handled just like bicycle walls are. And it's, it's kind of how they operate in that way.
I was surprised the other large communities have them, that there's really not that much problems with them. And then the second thing I was concerned about is people getting them and not bringing them back. In effect, but if these are the same ones that other communities have, they have trackers.
They start site track.
Disconnect them, let it stop working, and they go right to where they're at.
Yeah.
I know. I know the ones in the city of Tulsa are similar to what you're talking about. They have a certain, let's say, a certain zone, they can't go, if they go out of that area, they shut down and you're dead in the water.
Right. And they can set that up with Bird as well. I believe, I can't remember if it's Line, maybe that's in the Tulsa area, I'm not sure. But I know Bird can set that up as well, where if it goes outside of that zone, then it shuts off and they can't, can't ride it from there. And each ride, you have to download an app for it. Each ride, you pay for, and so it's a revenue stream as well for the city that wasn't coming in before. It pays taxes back to the city on every ride that, that somebody does. I think the average ride cost is about $5. Across their whole company, company-wide for Bird here, it may be a little bit different depending on, you know, how far somebody wants to ride it or.
Probably the age 18 is for the insurance, maybe. I don't know. You'd think it would be driver's license age and above, but I guess it's 18. Could lower that down because I can see a lot of, you know, 16-year-olds and high school kids, you know, enjoying this.
Find, they're going to their neighborhood, hop on, go to school in the morning.
Yeah.
Or anything like that.
Or anything like that.
Bird itself handles all of the liability on, it all falls back on them.
Okay.
Carry all the insurance and everything for it. What you said, unless it's negligent on, you know.
Which, which concerns me.
Our part as the fleet managers.
Yeah.
Will be responsible for ensuring that they stay charged and they're rotated and they're prepared and all of those things.
Yeah.
I just get so much positive feedback on the golf carts.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
You know, jumping in there, go downtown, go eat, to run to the grocery store, and they just, everybody just loves them.
Yeah.
So, I think these scooters.
I think they, they will be too. I just would like to be able to see the younger kids enjoy them a little bit because I think they would use them more. You know, I can see them riding around the lake and everything. That'd be really, really nice. But we're kind of family oriented and if you're doing, you know, only 18 and up, you're left out of the family, so.
Yeah, I think that's something that we can talk to them to see if they can lower that down a little bit.
I mean, that's just whatever, yeah.
As long as there's an 18 and older, they'll understand that 15 and 16.
Yeah.
Kids, I know they have, they have beginner mode that will only let you go so fast as you've ever done it. It won't let you go full speed.
Oh, that's, yeah.
And you just get on it and floor it and take off.
Yeah.
Speed up.
That's good.
Big delay for me to break my neck, probably.
I, I actually haven't ever ridden one before, so.
I ha, I haven't.
I haven't got the experience firsthand, but I've seen them everywhere.
Yeah.
They do have, I know some cities and some areas that they do, do require them to wear helmets with them. And so, that would just be up to the city to enforce that.
I don't.
Bird itself does, if that is a requirement, when you're in the app, you can go on, they will send you a helmet for free as long as you cover the shipping costs, so.
I don't know about a helmet. That'd be hot in the summer. But if you're only going 15, hopefully.
No.
Well.
You're talking about the old helmets, new.
New helmets.
New bike helmets.
They got the.
Oh, okay.
Counsel, what do you think?
Well, I make a motion to approve. Once y'all have any more discussion, did y'all have discussions, like I do all the time?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Councilor Efton?
Yes.
Councilor Kirby?
No.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mouser?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries with one no. We'll move on to item 11. Consideration of acceptance, approval, adoption, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of an ordinance amending the employee retirement system, defined benefit plan for the city of Ufala and Ufala Public Works Authority, Oklahoma, providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the city of Ufala and Ufala Public Works Authority, providing for repealer and severability and declaring an emergency. Mr. Jones, bring us up to speed here, please.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Val make, let put an explanation.
Okay.
What this is, is the city manager's retirement, which in Jeb's contract, you wanted to move down to matching 5%. And it is a, it is a DC. It's a defined contribution instead of a defined benefit. So, when you're going into a DC, you want to be young, you want to have a lot of time to put money into it. You don't want to start at the end of your, getting ready for retirement. On the DB, you're gonna get a better return on the money that you're investing. So, Jeb and I talked about it when he came, when he found out it was a DC on the city manager's side. He said, I would rather stay on the DB, which makes sense for him because he doesn't have as much time to retirement. Plus, he's already been on the DB on our side and on McAllister's side. So, he's already vested there and he's already got money in there. So, in order to do this, all it is, is saying we're going to take our city manager plan down to a, a pay in of 0%. And then it's, one ordinance is saying we're gonna pay in zero on the city manager's side. And the other ordinance is allowing Jeb to go back to the DB with the city matching of 5% per his contract. That's all. It's not costing the city any extra money and it's not costing him any extra money. It's just how the IRS requires us to.
To adopt. Okay. Ms. Wall?
Um, these are routine. I see these commonly. The language is furnished by the plan.
Yes.
And I'm grateful.
Okay. I make a motion to approve item 11.
Councilor Efton?
Yes.
Councilor Kirby?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mouser?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, that motion carries. We'll move on to item 12. Consideration of acceptance, approval, adoption, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of to approve an ordinance amending the employee retirement system, defined contribution plan for the position of city manager for the city of Ufala, Oklahoma, and Ufala Public Works Authority, Oklahoma, by adopting a revised and restated retirement plan providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the city of Ufala and Ufala Public Works Authority, providing for purpose and organization, providing for definitions, providing for eligibility and participation, providing for non-alien benefits, providing for employer and employee contributions, providing for accounting, allocation, and valuation, providing benefits providing for amendments and termination, providing for transfer to and from other plans, creating a retirement committee and providing for power of duty rights of retirement committee, providing for payment of certain obligations, providing for duration and payment of expenses, providing for effective date, providing for visiting schedules, providing for a fund to finance the system to be pooled with other incorporated cities, towns, and their agencies and instrumentalities for purposes of administration, management, and investments part of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, providing for payment of all contributions under this system to the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund for management and investment, providing for repealer and severability, adopting those amendments mandated by the Internal Revenue Code and declaring an emergency. Wow.
And this is just the companion to that. This is the DB side allowing Jeb to be back on the employee side of retirement.
Good. I make a motion to approve.
I'll say.
Councilor Efton?
Yes.
Councilor Kirby?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mouser?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, that motion carries. Move on to item 13, remarks and inquiries by city council. Mr. Efton, do you have anything? Mr. Kirby?
I have nothing. Vice Mayor?
I had something. I forgot what it was, so. I guess not.
Mr. Davis? All right.
Mayor, if I, I got, I got a few points I'd like to
Okay.
make comment on.
Go right ahead.
We're in the process this week, well, weather, weather front holds us up. We were gonna start on the lake board for the water line to go onto the lake.
Okay.
We had a pre-bid meeting for our sewer project. Bids will open this Thursday, April 7. We are, you know, two meetings ago, we talked about live streaming, live streaming the council meeting and we're running a test right now to make sure that we have all of our ducks in row and make sure the system is operating like it should. We have an opportunity to do some council training. We've done it in the past. OML, I'm sorry, O-MAG will come in. They'll do council training. We have a councilman's handbook. We go over it and they will write us a check for $10,000 for participating in this training. And then also, we have a chance to do some planning and zoning training with the council and the Planning and Zoning Committee. That, that training is, that's through OML. That's through OML. And I would think that's, I think that would be a, some important training that we need to participate in.
So, we don't have dates set up yet?
Not yet.
To be determined.
To be determined.
On the April 7th, bid opening, what time is that? Here at City Hall?
Uh, here.
Okay.
So, on the, the training aspect of it, if everyone is would like to participate in that, then I can work to make those arrangements.
Yes.
I'll get with you, get some dates from everyone to see what will work with your schedule and then we'll try to get it taken care of here in the next 30 or 45 days. Maybe we can do it in May.
Well, it's, it's something we need to do.
Did we do it before a council meeting one time?
It's normally done inside a council meeting, but it's normally done yearly because you're eligible for the $10,000 every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, the O-MAG, last two, two years ago, we done it in a council meeting. Uh, the OML training, that's probably gonna be a separate meeting.
If they would like to come on Friday night or Friday afternoon, that's a hard time.
Yeah.
Jeb, Jeb said we'll get back to it.
Yeah, we'll get back to it.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right. All right, item 15, adjournment of the public works side. I make a motion to adjourn?
Not public works, city council.
City council.
Yeah. I make a motion. Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, we're adjourned. Now then we'll roll on into the Ufala Public Works Authority meeting at 5:55. Ms. Cox?
Councilor Efton?
Here.
Councilor Kirby?
Here.
Mayor Warren?
Here.
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 All right. Move on to the consent agenda. Item two, approval of minutes, regular meeting, March 7th, 2022. Three, approval of the March 22 payroll figures for the Ufala Public Works Authority in the amount of $50,094.53. Consideration of acceptance, approval, adoption, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement to authorize the mayor's signature on the memorandum of understanding between the Oklahoma Department of Human Services and Ufala Public Works Authority to renew the lease for 25 Hospital Road. Item five, consideration of acceptance, approval, adoption, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of an ordinance amending the employee retirement system, which we done in the
Same.
City council meeting. Item six is the same thing that we approved in the city council meeting.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Councilor Efton?
Yes.
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 Oh, yes, that motion carries. We'll move on to item 7. Seven, consideration of acceptance, approval, adoption, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of pay application number 19 from Lone Hickory Cattle Company, LLC, amount of $74,919 from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan Number Two.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Councilor Efton?
Yes.
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 Oh, yes, that motion carries. Item eight, adjournment. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Councilor Efton?
Yes.
Councilor Kirby?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Yes.
They're switching to the musical chairs.
All right.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank y'all.